Hey, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Before we begin the meeting, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Overton will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of this land, with all my heart, and with all the love and reverence of God, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Dear God, thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us, and particularly during this festive time of the year. Help us to remember those less fortunate and open up our hearts and minds to give them a hand up or a kind word, or just a help that they might need. We thank you for all the healing that you provide for us and all the additional blessings that you provide for the whole world. Be with us now, tonight, in our deliberations, as we do all that is in the best interest of this community. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Mike. I'd like to again welcome everyone to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, and I'll ask our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey. Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Here.
Ernest Cate.
Here.
All right, thank you. Item four, we're at item four on the agenda. This is the, worry about Bobby Petrino right there. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have citizens that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief, and understand that the council won't take action on anything you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, what's your pleasure on the procedural motions, council?
I move for A and B.
Second.
Got a motion of second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Thank you. Patsy is already in her place there, ready to bring the planning commission report and recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is a rezoning request for 4.9 acres located at 2019 East Robinson. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to C5. The planning commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to thoroughfare commercial district C5, declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Council, any more questions or comments? Does anyone in the audience have any concerns or comments? Okay, roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
And as usual, the ordinance includes emergency clauses because they're pending actions on these properties. The second one is a request to rezone 130.05 acres located on West Emmett Avenue between North Fortieth and South Goodson Road. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to C1, neighborhood commercial. Planning commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to neighborhood commercial district C1, and declaring an emergency."
Patsy, could you refresh what can go into C1?
C1 is neighborhood commercial activities, cultural recreational facilities, neighborhood shopping goods. I can tell you better what it doesn't allow. It doesn't allow anything that has drive-ins. It doesn't allow auto services. It doesn't allow any of those kind of things.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Was there opposition at the planning commission to this? There was some questions. I don't know that there was opposition. The opening up of Emmett Street across here has created a whole different situation for that area than what we've ever had before. It is not part of the subdivision. It wasn't part of the subdivision or anything like that, hasn't been any of that time. Didn't have any access from the south until the road opened up. It's agricultural, the area to the... Yeah, it's green. All agricultural land is green.
That's backing up to the new fire station, correct?
Yeah, it's backing up to the new fire station, right? Access. Purple is C2, and it has access off of Huntsville. The property just to the east of this is zoned P1, which allows for institutional services or a church. I think the property is owned by a church. The property to the south is still A1. And if you'll notice, there's a commercial activity that's been on there for years. I don't think anybody knew that it was being used and stuff was being stored on the back until the road opened up. So, and it's a non-conforming use in an A1 zone. It's been there a long time.
Okay, yeah, we had a motion and a second, correct? Other questions? Patsy, when Randall mentioned the fire station, relocation station four, I guess at some point we'll need to bring, we'll want that P1, won't we? Aren't our others?
Yeah, we would probably, when we bring in the large scale, do the rezoning in the large scale all at the same time.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone in the audience need to speak to this one? Okay, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone 8.76 acres located at 4785 Don Thompson Parkway from A1 to MF16. The original request came in that the very corner that you see highlighted in pink would go to C5. The planning commission denied that C5 request for that corner. They have not appealed that decision, have since submitted a rezoning application to ask for a C2, which is similar to what was put on the other side and the other corner that we've done a couple of months ago. Planning commission recommends approval of this rezoning request from A1 to MF16. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to medium-high-density multifamily residential district MF16, and declaring an emergency."
So that item D that's coming up would be the C2, the corner?
No, it's coming up next.
It's coming up next?
It goes to the planning commission in December.
Okay, thank you.
So first, was there any distinction from anybody on this?
No, it was unanimous vote.
Do we have any citizens opposed?
We didn't have, we had, again, we had questions about the floodplain and how it was going to be developed. And MF16 allows multifamily for 16 units per acre, have to start out at 12 to get 16. They have to provide additional amenities and more open space, and we would address the drainage issues and those concerned with the large scale when it comes to it. It backs up to the park. It backs up to the floodway on the bottom side, so it's, you know, it's not a bad location for a multifamily as a buffer to some of those areas.
Because that's pretty much single-family homes in that area, right?
To the north of it, if you go to the other side, it's part of that Haverton Ridge planning and development. There are some duplexes, some smaller homes on smaller lots, and it's a putt on that side. And the city has the fire station location on the other side of Haverton at that location. That property was donated to the city.
So Rex, don't you have any questions about flooding in that area?
We will address those issues when we get to a large scale.
So it's just the orange area?
Yeah, the orange area would be the MF16. The corner on there that's the bright pink was requested to be C5. That was denied, and they have since come back with a request to rezone that corner to C2. The corner on the opposite side, and I don't know if the zoning map's been updated yet, on the other corner was rezoned to C2 a couple of months ago. I don't know if the zoning map is yet. See, it's been updated.
But for the time being, until that happens, that would remain A1?
Yes, it'll remain A1 until it goes to planning commission.
Okay.
So, Patsy, what does that mean when you say we will address it with the large-scale development? Because clearly, part of the problem out there is from all the development, you know, so I'm assuming it's all been addressed somewhere along the line. How do we address it, and are we addressing it strongly enough?
Well, I can tell you now, we're addressing it much more strongly than we did. You deal with a large-scale development plan. They are required to do detention. They are required to do a drainage study that shows what the runoff is now, what comes onto the property. As they increase that runoff, they have to address that with the design, either with an additional detention pond, put it underneath a parking lot. There's a lot of options, and we get into those once it has been rezoned and we move forward with a large-scale development plan.
Patsy, where would you put the retention pond?
Well, I'm not an engineer, so I can't tell you that. And that's what you pay professionals to do, to come in and do the, to do the design work and figure out where it needs to go. And then staff reviews it, we respond to those drainage studies, those layouts as they're done, we make modifications to them as needed as we go through before it ever gets approved to go to construction.
But they're only responsible, would they have to put it on, they'll have to put it on their land, right?
They have to put it on their property, yes. And if it's truly a detention pond, it can't, it can't be counted as part of their open space. It can't be counted as an amenity. It has to have a maintenance plan that goes with it. All those things are designed, we've done apartment complexes all over town with detention facilities in them. This is not a new concept.
And I know, I know you'll help those people out with the engineering stuff, but we need to pay particular attention. Anything, any development out there, we have to pay attention.
We know that. We know that that is a major flood area through there, you know? That has to be taken into account, and the developer knows that because it's clearly on the map that part of that's a floodway, and they can't build a floodway at all. So we'll deal with that as, as construction is proposed, as development comes forward. That's what we do in every, every process. The zoning is to decide if the highest and best use of this piece of property is for multifamily use. Once you make that determination, then they can move forward and spend the money to have it designed and laid out and figure out how they can make it work. They may not be able to get 16 units per acre on that lot. That may be, that may be too much, but they can go all the way down, they just can't go above 16.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments, council?
So are we, so I'm assuming we're good on sewer services for this out in that area?
That's something that has to be addressed, too. They are told at the very beginning, when they come to us and look at pieces of property, you need to work with the Springdale Water Department to determine what kind of capacity issues there are there. I mean, they're told from the very beginning, and that's part of the review process. The Springdale Water gets the plans to look at water and sewer and, you know, fire protection and all that kind of stuff. That's part of the development process we go through all the time.
Much of, much of the development out there, Brian, if I'm remembering right, has, is Springdale Water is able to handle the sewer capacity, but what they're not, I think they're, with this new facility they're putting in, then they will be able to.
And they may not can move forward until that capacity is increased.
Right, they may have to wait, but at any rate, they're gonna have to make sure that's there.
We deal with all that through the development process and understand, they may want to get a head start on it, so that when those improvements are ready and can handle the capacity, then they're ready to move forward. Keep in mind, a large-scale development plan is only good for a year if you haven't started construction. So, you know, that's part of the process and something they have to work through.
Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? Okay, Denise?
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone 4.57 acres located at 3830 and 3884 South Ole Missouri Road. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to C2. Planning commission reviewed this request and again recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to general commercial district C2, and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, roll call, please.
Fugierus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next request is for a waiver of sidewalk construction for 2205 South 48th Street, where a single-family home is being constructed. This is a long, narrow lot that backs up to I-49. They're requesting a waiver of the sidewalk. Planning commission recommends approval of the waiver, or with option one. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Stephen Mary Upshaw, in connection with 2205, north 48th Street, a single-family dwelling."
So...
Move the resolution pass, option one.
So we're trying to waiver it, but we're still trying to do as many curb and drainage as possible.
Well, with a single-family home built on an existing track, they're not required to do street improvements, but they still are required to do sidewalks. And the planning commission is recommending, because of this location being adjacent to 48th Street, that's gonna have to have something done to it in the future, that we waive the sidewalk requirements.
Second.
Because it would be pulled up whenever we would do improvements.
Could be, yes.
Anybody else have questions? Because we do, we did get a second, okay? Anybody in the audience? All right, roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. And we're at item eight, Finance Committee. Amelia Williams, Chairman, Amelia?
Okay, item A is an ordinance setting the salaries for elected officials and planning commission members of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and repealing ordinance number 5783, and this is presented by Mayor Doug Sprouse.
Okay.
All of these items underneath the Finance Committee were forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, roll call.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Has an emergency clause to make it go into February 1st.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Item B is a resolution approving the city of Springdale, Arkansas's budget for the year of 2024. Again, this is presented by Mayor Doug Sprouse.
All right, council, I think the updated numbers Anna handed out, Colby, we took all your suggestions with Cody, and I think everything's incorporated into here now.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion of second to approve. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Well...
Carries eight zero.
Well, you were last, so... Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take just a second. Thank you, council. And, and this process, I've told in several interviews that I've done about this, that this was the smoothest this year that I can remember, and I appreciate everybody's help on this. Colby really took the lead on this, working with all of our department heads who did such a great job, and Gina in HR, and, and just make, because they were dealing with insurance changes at the same time. So this was not, it was not, it was, it made a busy time of year, much busier, and much more pressure. Anna was a big help. So I just want to thank everybody, including this council, for, for making this process work so well. And I think we've got an excellent budget in a, in a fairly uncertain financial climate. So, so thanks, thanks to everybody who had anything to do with it. Thank you, council, for your work and your guidance as we went through this process. All right, go ahead, Amelia. Thank you.
Item C is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into an agreement with the city of Lowell, Arkansas, for overlay improvements to Apple Blossom Avenue and to waive competitive bidding.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
Item D is a resolution authorizing the grant of a water sewer easement to the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission across property owned by the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. This is presented by Ernest Cate, City Attorney, and Rick Pulverini, Springdale Water Utilities.
Thank you. What we have before you this evening is a request, as Amelia says, for an easement on certain properties that you own on Spring Creek Avenue, just south of Electric Avenue. The Water and Sewer Commission desires to build a one and a half million gallon underground storage reservoir for sanitary flows in that area. That will help alleviate the sewer situation that we have in the southeast quadrant, allowing for development to occur. That's what we have before you this evening.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Sorry, go, okay, Rex made the motion. If, I'll wait, I just got one question. Do we have a second?
Well, I have a question, too.
Okay, go ahead, yeah. All right, I just wondered on the timeline, Rick.
What we hope to do, we have a construction manager already onboard to do the work. We think it's gonna take between a year and a year and a half to construct, hopefully in the year.
So if this is needed for additional development, you're probably, it's probably gonna be, we're not gonna be holding anything up?
What we hope to do, Mayor, is to time our construction with others in that basin so that we kind of meet in the end, you know, in a year, year, year and a half.
Okay.
You know, the planning necessary to design subdivisions takes considerable amount of time. So we're hoping, we're working with developers in that area to explain that to them so that they can work within those timeframes for what's best for them.
Okay. Brian?
Rick, when this was presented to a committee, the talk was to use the trail as an access and have bollards placed there. And then, when I looked down into the draft on red letter page 27, it shows a maintenance entrance off of Spring Creek Avenue. So is it changed? Do we want, is the entrance going to become off Spring Creek Avenue?
The entrance for operations, that being utility crews to do cleaning will be off Spring Creek Avenue. For the construction of the underground storage, most of that activity will occur off Electric Avenue through the basic block properties. That's our intent.
So what about the trail with the bollards?
The trail with the bollards, when we need to get a truck up there to do cleaning, we'll just drive a truck up that trail, do our cleaning work in the basin, and then go out, put the bollards back up after we're done.
But you'll still have an access, a maintenance drive access off of Spring Creek Avenue?
Correct, 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 sir. Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
Why, why was this in Finance Committee? Just because we didn't know where else to put it?
You know, actually, I think Finance Committee ended. It's in, yeah, I, no, it didn't end because the next one, the, the next resolution is Finance Committee. Amelia, did we have this during your committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 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 City Attorney says we had to put it somewhere. So here it is. All right, we had, do have a motion and a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Item E is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract for consultant services with H3 Studios for elaboration to the downtown master plan, southeast development master plan, and downtown parking study. And this is presented by Patsy Christie, Planning Director.
I really don't have anything to add other than what we had the other night. But if you were down for the parade on Saturday, you can see why we need a parking study because there was a huge crowd Saturday. It was great.
I told one, I was doing one interview today, and I said, we're, we're just trying to stay ahead of this, and, and we want to do it right. And it's planning costs money. So H3's, H...
Yeah. Quit trying to say we're going to stay ahead. We want to at least stay even.
Yeah.
And not get behind. That's what we're trying to do, is not get any further behind than we are.
Um, H3's done a good job for us. They're very familiar with what we've got down here. And this could really help us identify, but it's not only parking.
No, it, it's the housing issue, too. We need to make sure that we accomplish and provide a variety of housing in downtown to support the activities that are going on in downtown Springdale. And we need to identify some options and some, and, and he, they have worked with some of the developers, and they understand some of the things that they want to try to get done and how we move some of this kind of stuff.
We did have one developer represented during an earlier meeting that was very supportive of this, but they're not here tonight.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
Item F is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for a drainage project on Wilkinson Lane, Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, to waive competitive bidding and for other purposes. And this is presented by Ben Peters, Engineering Director.
Good evening. So we, we've talked about this a couple of times. This is the Murphy Park Drainage, where the box core goes under the building. We've acquired the property. We have an order of possession. Now we need to take down that part of the building that's over top of the drainage system, and that's what this is.
Move the resolution be adopted?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve it. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience to speak to this issue? Okay. Roll call, please.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?[1495.04]